Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Halifax Planning Board on April 6, 2023. The Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. The listings of the matters of those are reasonably anticipated by the Chair or what I'm going to be reading. Not all items listed may, in fact, be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Appointments tonight: We have 0 and 314 Plymouth Street for self-storage and rental office. We have peer review from PGV Engineering submitted and sent to the board on April 4. And we have discussions for Magical Years 933 Plymouth Street, requested by Rick Mary. We have bills for the Express Newspaper, and we have bills for PGV Engineering, meeting minutes, and male correspondence. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as read?
The motion to accept the agenda was read.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, and tonight, we have Mr. Gaynor, Mr. Mary, myself, Ms. Troop, and Mr. Elliott. Okay.
Tom?
Yeah?
Can you stand up? Do you need to deface the camera? This is going to be very good, because my name is Chris Peterson. My partner, Frederick McCarthy, was here at the last planning board. He had a family obligation, so I'm here from Southern Ohio. And loving the weather, by the way, that it's working to finally come to a meeting in the U K where it's, you know.
Yes.
So I guess just by pre-temble, we start this whole process. Lapski, or October, when we first went to the ZDA, we were informed, hey, we're premature. There's a lot of other process that you need to go through, specifically Conservation Commission Plan. Ultimately, we started doing that process with the site plan, stormwater, etc. Met with the Conservation Commission in February 14, at which point they said, we think you are applying for it. So that was the last meeting. Don't have the date on hand. I think it was sometime in March, March 27, something like that? March 2, excuse me. So, long story short, I believe you explained that we needed a peer review. We've done that. I think we're our second iteration. Done everything we can to address all the concerns on the list. I'm not the expert, so now I'll give it to Larry to kind of go through what we've done to date and what we plan to do. Hopefully, we can kind of draw this to a conclusion.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
So the plans went out, peer review, and I do want to commend your peer review, because we dealt with him before, and actually, he's done a very good job. Great problem. No, doesn't break out for a long period of time, gets back in a timely manner. So first, they came back with more comments, and then what we did is we went back in and adjusted what we thought for each one of his comments in order to try to reach completion of every item. And then we did respond with a second, a second round of comments, in which there were a couple of open issues that were still not 100% satisfied, but we identified those items that we still had that were open. So we went back and did what was necessary in order to address those remaining items. We intend to now adjust the plans in that way and send them both to you and to him, however you are looking to have that done. But there were really just a couple of items that were still outstanding. One had to do with, it was a really choice in the op-ops, because we did everything for pre- and post-drainage evaluation of rates of flow. And what he wanted us to do was to show from volume of flow that there was not, that we mitigated volume flow, okay, and/or evaluate the entire water shed basically going down, radiating through Gulf Force all the way down to the river. That would be no other way to deal with it, because that would show that there'd be no adverse effects if anyone down the stream all the way to the river. So, so in order to address that one, what we've done is we increased the amount of volume retention in the detention basin, the one that's on the Gulf Force, in order to meet the volume requirement, in order to choose that, in order to address it. It doesn't affect the Gulf Force, because it's in the area that's between the two, it's in this area down here, it's in between the two fairways, and so it's not something that was a problem with the Gulf Force. They said that was fine. So we increased that area considerably. There was one other one that was, I think there was a question, or some, he said that there was some, something that was not discussed in the narrative that was granted before we had that discussion, too, that it was a description of the best management practices, everything that we had in there was a couple that wasn't part of the narrative, so he wanted those included. And then there was a comment about whether or not there was some inconsistency between the checklist and the narrative he wanted that clarified. We took care of just resolving that issue. And then there was, I think that was the only ones that were outstanding? No, there was one that he had as a comment, it was about the 1-inch rainfall, and that also went back to the amount of suspended solids that we had to address. And part of what we did to address that one was that we, basically, in this area here, we had a double, a seven, a four bay. We've now increased the volume of the detention basin in this area, and we went to a vortex pretreatment for the water quality in order to address both components. So we took care of, taking care of the volume that we needed to be handling there, but also the water quality is part of the vortex. So that's, that is going to be added to the plan in the final set that we would be submitting as the record firm. So those were the, those were the items that were left. I mean, I am well glad we got to each and every detail that was in the back before, but my understanding is, is that with us addressing those last three, three items that we had here, that, you know, that were both agreed in essence of design, that is on the plan itself. And those were, and what was, as we were hoping of, is that we could get to a point of having, if the board was inclined, to get that to be some sort of condition in and approval that allowed for us to take that next step, to get back to zoning board, conservation. The answer was this condition for who, that we met with outstanding designers, and that the record plan that you have would be able to satisfy all of you, as I think that. We were hoping, we didn't get, we didn't have enough time in the time that we got that second round of comments to actually have another set, to be able to go back to him, to him to communicate to you that those remaining items had been addressed. But we did do two iterations, even in that small amount of time. But they're not big items, and kind of felt like if there was a way to be able to condition just resolving those, that I think that it would allow for us to go back now to zoning board, conservation, to continue the process there. Because I think there was an expression that was used at the last meeting. I don't know if it was your expression, but not about the hamster wheel of death.
Oh, yeah. I'm full of those fun comments, so luckily, we don't have any microphones here tonight.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it. There's so many, there's multiple permits in need, and the sequence of being able to try to resolve those all. But those, those are the only other items. I think in the first round of comments, part of the problem was, I don't think that he had all the turd, okay? He didn't have some of the architectural stuff, lighting, some of the things that the, this initial review didn't include, so we need to make sure he had them, so no problems were expressed in that connection. That's kind of, that's kind of what we had. It really was more just refinement of the, of the drain, of handling the drainage on both sides, to make sure that we're both satisfied, we're all satisfied that we told stormwater management. And what do I do, what I do? You know, the one that he asked a question about the, that was also one which we showed with, another four feet, I think, to the bathroom.
Does anybody have any questions?
Can you open those up to questions, or how do you do this?
Yeah.
So I just have one question. You made reference to, it was like the very first item that you've made, and you pointed out to the left-hand side on the bottom part of the, of the map, that you said, there was no problem with that, we checked with that. It was no problem for who and what? I didn't know what you were referencing. I believe it was the drainage of the water flow?
Well, we here.
Yes, exactly.
We had, we had seven, four bay, then we had drainage basin into here. In order to address this comment of retaining the volume, not just the rate in which it goes through, but the volume of flow, it meant that we had to size this lodger, so we had to take up more area within the Gulf Force in order to address that volume. We checked with, the techs, they were fine with that. And so what we've done is, it's still in the areas between the two fairways, it's just that it's a little wider and a little longer in order, taking more volume. Because the, because it's all based on the infiltration rates, and the soils in this area here don't have a really large, you know, infiltration rate. They're not like fascinating soils, okay? So you can't let it out very quickly, so you need a larger barrier on the bottom in order for it to, to meet the infiltration requirements. So that's, so this, this got larger within here. It's off-site, it's the, it's on the country club sort of property, but that's what was needed in order to meet that, that comment. Is that the one you were referring to?
Yes, and I didn't have a chance to read over what you, your answers were that you just gave the board, but number 13, maybe they can, here, review their, they make reference about the checking with Concom regarding the wetlands, the links through the ocean, the accuracy of it, that the plan used 2015, and there were all the newer ones that were used in 2021, '22.
Right. The wetland line as it's shown here is the line of, right? That line is still valid, line.
From 2000.
Because it was from 15, and then it was extended. And then there was another notice from the tent that was submitted for us doing the testing on the site, the test pits and, and bards, and that line carried forward in that in the 2022, November 21, or something, or '22.
October 2022.
Yeah. So where it says here. That line through November 23.
So when it says here, we deferred to the Conservation Commission for the accuracy of the wetlands delineation, they've accepted the 2015?
Yeah. And in fact, in fact, I don't want to speak for the commission, but there are members of the commission that don't even feel that this is, technically, a wetland that's more of, has been a drainage basin that the town has used for how many years, just discharging water from the street and so forth. But we treat it as a wetland, because that's the way it's delivered. And the other ones that were in conflict with it, that the reviewer mentioned, were ones that were done independent of this project, they were done for that original storage project, and.
What they done for O'Reilly's also?
Yeah.
Okay, so then which ones acted? Which one should we go live? Is the 2015, you don't mind me asking?
No.
Without going for.
You know how, I don't do that.
Sorry, I didn't want to break the group. But which one should we be using then?
Well, I mean, like I said in my letter.
Right.
It's conservation jurisdiction. I just wanted to bring the point forward, you know, it was raised years ago, too, when this was proposed, or a different project. I just wanted to put that out there, so everybody's aware of it, and it can be talked about.
Yeah, I think it's really important.
I talked about it.
Me, too.
I was unaware of the spread of this in from some of those projects.
So they would have to determine, the Conservation Commission, and as far as, as far as compliance with the, with all the other chapters and requirements from the Town of Halifax, did they address all of them to your satisfaction?
Based on what Mr. Silver just said, it sounds like they're going to address the remaining few that were here. The only thing I would say, the only basin that changed is the one with the Gulf Force, it's not a problem. If the other one changed, there is a DEP setback of 50 feet for the wetland for infiltration basin, so you can't get any closer than that. So just, if that's where you're trying to expand out, just be more than this 50-foot center. But other than that, it sounds like they're working on the last few items that were being. The only other item that wasn't brought up, that I thought may be of interest to somebody buggered, is this retaining wall, and I had included that. There's different textures for that wall, so just so it doesn't look like a blank concrete wall, you know, you guys may want to have some, if the abutters are here, just have some input from them.
Big condition, big condition.
Yeah, just so they're not huge concrete wall.
Now, it's two on, on the list also, that you would make reference to the drainage inspections and whatnot, times, bought it, were they all addressed?
That's one of the things that he mentioned.
I mean, it might be here in the letter.
Yeah, there's a couple of, they're still working, but that's one of the other references that he mentioned tonight, that is still working. They have everything in there?
Yeah.
If it's not consistent.
Yeah, because Mr. Peck, at our last meeting, was very clear that, that it was going to get handled to Mrs. Alge's satisfaction. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
As far as this is concerned?
Mm-hmm.
Nope.
Or any other plan? Does anybody from the public want to speak on the project? Any questions?
I'd like to.
Can you, hold on, can you just stand up, say your name, and add, we don't have a microphone tonight, and then the question gets addressed through the board, and then they'll ask.
Could you just open B1 by one of the lines? I was like, is there some people remaining, wanting to be presented?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to track it here.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering the square footage of the project.
Okay. The square footage of the project, Mr. Silver?
The square footage of the storage volume, okay, area? You want to get the, the answer through the chair anymore?
Please.
The square square footage of the building, 49,800 square feet.
Forty-nine thousand, I'm sorry.
Forty-nine thousand, eight hundred.
Forty-nine thousand, eight hundred are the total of all the buildings.
Total of the building. Yes, just to put that in context, it's over eight buildings on five and a half acres. Great.
Did you hear all that?
Yes.
You good? You have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Anybody else?
How soon can we, can we expect to get the revised revision final, how's it called? Or is this a little process that's going to take?
You know, they were already working on it, I think you will have, you will have it back to, within, no more than two weeks, but within probably a week, because time is up.
So that our next meeting, you'll have all the new plans? All the revisions, all?
That's correct.
Yeah. But what you're, what you're looking is get through the other boards, and that'll wait another two weeks.
Right. So I think what he, I think what he was asking is that because of the things on the list that they've addressed and just haven't had time, if there's a way to put that as a, if we're going to approve it, make it a conditional approval, so that that way they can get on the zoning board and the conservation board and stuff.
Yeah, I, the Chair, just to clarify, we currently have, we're currently on the agenda for conservation and zoning board, April 10 and April 11.
Right.
You can see we're optimistic. But so, yes, ideally, given the timeline's rate, but so far as we get content in another two weeks, obviously, have to postpone those things to get that this.
So if, Brendan, if you feel confident in the work that they've been doing to give, to satisfy the requests that you've had on your list up to this point, and that they're going to have that, the missing pieces, it seems to be only two or three.
And I guess question number two would be if, if during the process of the revisions, if once we approve the, and make a contingent upon, I mean, what's our, what's our safeguard? You know?
Well, that's what I was thinking, so to talk about that, I would think that we will approve this if Conservation and zoning approve it, so that they have to come back to us. We'll send a letter to Conservation, and this is an idea, Conservation and zoning, that we would approve this as long as the wetlands are okay, as long as everything's met with this letter, and that they get their variances from zoning, and that we make sure that the wetlands are delineated at the right date and time, that they're using the right information from the conservation, and then we'll come back for the final stamp. That's how I think it should be done.
We should have Pat look at it again when it's, everything's final, before.
That's what I'm thinking.
Just breeze over real quick, is that?
But that at least wouldn't hold you from your next two days.
Yeah, ultimately, you know, both zoning and Conservation Commission have monthly meetings.
Right.
So it's not come back to you guys in two weeks, and you're going to have to wait another three weeks after that. So again, it's ideal, I understand where you're coming from, but part of this question as to whether or not you can condition your approval on whatever it is that you want, that provides us the official documentation, if you will, so that when we're from the Conservation Commission, who has a different jurisdiction than the zoning board, who has a different jurisdiction, they can at least see that there is support here. The other thing that we're really not talking about, this may have gotten lost in the wind for this larger site plan, is we still have to come back before you for a special permit for a building over 18,000.
That is open now.
Yeah, that is currently open.
It's still open, open here.
In fact, we did this whole thing back in October of 2022, we applied to the planning board, the zoning board, for the two different things, as special permits, and then we had a lot more work to do.
Can I ask a new guy question, Brendan? Is that commonplace, Brendan, to?
Pat.
I'm sorry. To vote on something contingent upon the other approvals?
I mean, it's completely, it's new. You could possibly condition it that they receive those other two approvals. I mean, if they don't, project is dead.
Yeah, project's dead anyways. I think what the conditional, I think what the conditional approval is, is based off of this, if we think that everything's good, other than what's missing here, that is being told that it's going to be done, then we would say, we, as long as they satisfy this, along with a couple of other conditions, we would approve it, and then it would be to zoning and conservation anyways, because if they decline it one way or another, the project's dead. So it's not like we have to.
And they'd still have to come back to.
Right. So it's more to say, we'll give you the condition, the conditional approval is based off of them completing this and whatever else we, well, not whatever, but anything else that we may discuss.
I like that thought, and I'm on that, but we can do the same thing by writing them an email from us that says, we will be okay, but we need to check this, that, and that, and not sign the site plan until it's done. We still have a special permit to get, which is null and void if zoning doesn't give a variance for use. So, and in all honesty, yes, it'll all go away, but if we write the boards that as long as everything goes through with everything, and that all of this information is correct with Conservation, but quite honestly, I don't feel good signing something, not knowing whether or not Conservation's delineation is correct.
I totally agree. I think that the only question is whether or not.
Are you the same? Sorry, Larry.
Whether or not you say, telling them, you have to, I believe that you would have to take a vote to that effect.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we'll vote to tell them, but we're not going to, we're not going to vote to approve the site plan.
What I'm saying is that, that the board will not sign the plan as is final until all, all the remaining issues of the review engineer are met. And I think that that at least allows for us to be in the other two places.
Could, as part of your vote, if you're going to go through that, then part of the reason why I did the pre-temble in the first place is, we first went to ZDA, I said, you're premature, you got to go here first. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I'm frustrated with it. I'm just trying.
No, I was just breathing.
Sort of go with our time. Then we went to the Conservation Commission, and they're like, you don't want to make a decision until the planning board is ZDA. We kind of said, okay, we're having to do whatever it is that we need, so we just sort of need to know what that is.
Yep.
So if this is the direction the planning board wishes to go, 100% respect that. We'd just liken it as, I guess, part of the record that to the extent the Conservation Commission or the ZDA somehow doesn't give us our approval because they want to see planning board, we're going to be right back here asking the same question.
What's the phrase? The hamster wheel of death. You do not want that.
Yeah, we don't want you to have that.
So here's, here's what we're saying, and to clean it up, as far as how I see it in my brain, we go through the conditions that would be required for you to complete between now and when you see the zoning board, right, or the Conservation, whatever's first, and they have a letter or a statement from us saying that we had no problems based off of the, as long as these conditions were met. So at least when you go in front of them and say, did you talk to the planning board? They say, yep, and they even say, you're cool as long as these were done. They'll go, did you do these? You say, yep. And then once all the boards approve it, you have to come back to us anyways to sign off and do the special permit, you're rocking them all, assuming it's a yes vote. That'll caddie out.
Yeah. Would that, may I ask one more question? Would this be sufficient for us to keep our current schedule, meaning like April 10, we will, would that be able to get to those board members in that time?
We'll have the letter out, well, yeah, no, I understand that. We'll have the letter out on Monday.
Yeah.
We would have it out tomorrow if we could, but it's, it's a holiday.
So the only two, the only conditions that I have, which I'm assuming is probably already in your plans, and it's not specific to the engineering, was more for the retention wall designed for the abutters, the large arboritees, to block that larger building on the base of your property, and the, I'm calling it a creek, for the lack of a better phrase, the creek maintenance, to make sure that it doesn't overgrow at your discretion. So I just wanted to make sure for the record that those are in there before we vote.
We agree.
Is that cool?
I agree with you.
How old are you, Virginia Dale, on the easement?
We'll include easement maintenance, of all.
We may get conditioned upon the, also, the easement's being enacted with the, with the.
Or if not enacted, we just would at least agree to, and right of my Mrs. Alder and her attorney. So in other words, she's not going to give us an easement unless we can afford it.
Right, right, of course, of course.
So we'll have to rate the science stuff, but we.
Now's your time to ask for extra stuff.
There you go.
I'm just kidding. Are you good?
That's awesome.
Everything else good?
That's a nice way.
Yeah, right. On a gold-plated golf cart.
As long as it's gas, because electric, no passive.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there seems to be, if we were to make a motion, there's, there seems to be a lot of, it may be a lengthy motion, so maybe we should clean that up, the conditions, so that we can at least take a, some kind of vote.
I have a good idea.
Okay.
Refer to the letter of, from April 6th with comments from PGV Engineering, all that.
April 6th, that's good.
Oh, sorry, April 6th, Silver, I was, that's why I was looking at you, I'm like, wait a minute. Silver Engineering, they, yeah, I gave it to him. Silver Engineering letter from April 6, 2023, make sure that all of those items.
I love how you're looking at me like I'm going to make the motion, but all right, there we go. What was the, how would you like?
And then the three things on the back.
And what would the proper way be to phrase the easement situation, if I had to put it in record?
Let me think.
An agreed, can I step in? An agreed upon?
Because it's. Because it's won't have been signed.
Future, future legal consideration.
Final form of easement.
Subject, subject to the easement being agreed upon between developer and, and abutter.
Before work, okay, there you go. I like that. We'll have the easement people sign it before we start the project.
Even prior to, prior to work commencement. Okay. Let's give this a shot, everybody. Keep your comments to yourself, folks. All right. Does anybody, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any comments? I should probably open that up. Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, we had discussed for a lady who was looking at this project relative to looking at that big machine called Red Building down here, instead of the action parade, and we had talked about giant arborvitae on that building. Is that over the discussion of this meeting, or so we have to do that to the zoning board or conservation?
That's on my list of, that's on my list of demands. I'm going to try to sneak that gold-plated golf cart in front of you. Yeah, commission, condition. See, see how important the language is there? All right. But I haven't made, I haven't officially made the motion yet, so I can screw up my words. Okay. I make a motion in reference to the April 6, 2023 Silva Engineering Associates letter and list of outstanding requirements that we conditionally approve the project based on the fact that the, once it goes to the other boards, the conservation and the zoning, upon approval, they'll come back for final approval and our signature. And inside those conditions are not only what's on this list outstanding, but also that they give the abutters input on the retention wall, that the large arborvitae are placed behind the abutters lands in front of the largest building, and that the maintenance in front of, what do you call that? The creek?
Fault ditch.
Ditch, the drainage ditch. The drainage ditch is regularly maintained by the owners of the storage facility, and also subject to the approval of the easement prior to work, the commencement of the work of the project.
Wait, wait a second. Hold on. We have a motion, we can't, that's okay.
Yeah.
I'm a little about the conditionally approved. I think that that should be a little tweaked.
Tweak.
Do you think, like, that's fine?
No, I'm kidding. That's a joke.
Move the other boards to do their due diligence in order for the planning board to make a final approval.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Do you know what I'm saying? So like, we are saying to them.
That's the only reason we're doing this.
But isn't that what a conditional approval is?
Yes.
But isn't a conditional, sorry, I mean, isn't a conditional approval saying that we're approving it as long as those conditions are met? That's what the definition of a conditional approval is.
But they still have to come back to us for the other three.
For the rest of the boards to go ahead and move forward.
Right. Because here's the thing, if they don't meet anything on this, then as far as the other boards are considered.
It's done.
It's done. If the other boards, for whatever reason, don't like the project or like what they see, it's done. Right? So everything has to happen anyways in order for this, it's not an approval, it's a conditional approval. That, that C-word in front of it is, kind of takes care of that sentence.
As long as it's in there that they come back to us for the final vote, that we're not voting to sign the site.
Yeah. No, and I said that in that motion, I said that they will come back upon approval of the other two boards.
Okay.
Because no.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, no, no. Let's, let's get it done.
I just want to make sure.
Site plan as, as we speak.
Because we haven't had a final.
You know what I mean? But conditional approval with their approvals ready could mean that we have to sign it. Do you see what I'm saying? Because if they approve it, then we might have to sign it because we are conditionally approved only based on them.
But if we've had a reason, if we had a reason not to approve it after the next two boards approved it, then we wouldn't vote yes right now. So by voting yes right now, it's based off of all these conditions.
Based on these conditions.
Right.
If another condition comes up, Amy, then we can move forward as.
Right, but if another one doesn't, they'll come back, and then we still have those other things to work out, and we're not signing. So technically, we're not giving a full conditional approval. We're asking them to go forward, saying that we are almost there. Please make decisions so that we, and do, and because really, in all honesty, we can't approve it until we know whether the delineations are correct from the correct date. I don't feel comfortable saying, yeah, you can do that, and then, like, you know what I mean? But, and I get that.
But if they come back, so if they come back under the conditional approval, once they come back, even if the other two boards approve it, if any of these conditions aren't met, then we have the right to revoke our approval. That's the whole point of the condition. And that was set in there. I mean, I won't, I'll try to say it again if you want, but that's the whole point of the conditional approval, is not just the condition that the other two boards approve it, but that everything was met, and then they have to come back.
And then the other things on the back.
100%. Otherwise, it's no longer a conditional approval because they didn't meet the conditions. So we're not signing anything.
Right. But I'm just making sure that we're not legally bound to sign something because we gave a conditional approval based on the two other boards, that they come, that we could be somehow forced to have to sign because the other two boards said yes.
But the only reason we wouldn't sign is if any of these conditions weren't met. Right?
Yep. And then also still special permit for the oversized building.
For them to at least move to the next step. This is saying, they're going to do what they say on this list and on the back that we just read. They meet all this, the other two boards approve, they come back, everything's knocked out, now we approve.
And then we have the updated stormwater management in here as well, right?
It was mentioned in there.
I'm just making sure. I know I read it, but.
First one, yeah, tonight's one.
Yeah, I read it, and I think it's in here, but my eyes just want to see it again.
Some comment one on page one, then comment eight, to the top of page two.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Pat.
So I mean, there's a whole list of stuff that they have to meet, plus the list that we came up with on the back for the abutters, and we're adding the other two. I mean, that's about as.
Okay, I'm just making sure. We're on target with everything.
Well, not we, but there's been, better to measure twice than cut once, but.
All right, so you have a.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, we do have a second?
No, do we have a second?
A second.
Michael, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks for not making me happy.
4-0, this letter.
Take up the second item, which is the, is the, the building, the two-story building, the square footage. That's, that's another.
I think that's, that's, we'll come back to that as well.
You're going to come back for that after the other two boards.
Essentially, if, and maybe just for education, here's what, not what it would be, April 10, elimination, we essentially get a notice to proceed or order of conditions or whatever they provide. The zoning, and again, if you're doing this all armed with zoning for the planning board stands and the conditions were subject to you.
Cut.
April 11, you know, before the zoning board, not what you get approval for the uses in some storage facility, and you get on the agenda, I guess, for special permit for the next, no, it's a special, pardon me, a special permit is a separate, here is an open, yes, that is a separate.
We don't have it on our agenda.
Because of the conditional approval.
We don't have it on our agenda.
Because the conditional approval is for us to be able to come back, for them to endorse that site plan, and saying that we met all the conditions. The hearing, it's still open, is for the request to have the building that's in excess of the 15,000 square feet. Yeah, that is still, that is still open, that they need to be able to look at. In this court, it's open here.
It is, but we do not have it on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, they set the agenda.
It's not.
We have three, four.
Application.
It's not on here.
Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah, it's not on there. Just had something about the septic system. That was last night, I guess.
Are you concerned that you would go through all of it and then come back and then essentially go through all that work and then get declined, the special permit, which would stop the project?
Yes.
Which then takes the square footage down considerably. And that's why we did, if we currently need to vote, at the application was from both the special permit and the site plan approval, that's how it was filed.
So that if they go to the other boards? I don't, I don't know the protocol.
Do your bylaws seem allowed for opening up the agenda once it's set by board?
We already voted and made it.
That's what I asked you to say.
The challenging zones might be, is that high enough to shed some light on this?
Patsaya? One second.
Wouldn't it be better to get all the approvals first and give us the special permit, then they go back to the zoning board and conservation? If they don't do that, then we tied up either the conservation or the zoning. It would be better to have them do all the requirements that they need to do here right now, and give them the special permit so they can move on.
Well, they're already scheduled for April 10 to go in front of the zoning board for their special, their variance for the use in a business district. So I think.
Excuse me, but they need the special permit before they go to the zoning board.
Yeah, for that, built for the oversized building.
For the oversized building.
Yes.
But they, but it's, no, they don't, because it's a use. So if you don't allow the use, it doesn't matter either of the things that we're talking, any of the things we're talking about. If you're, if the zoning board of appeals does not agree to the use being okay in that business district, none of this matters. None of whether they have a special permit for the oversized building. In actuality, my thought process is that zoning should be allowing the use before we even go through any of this. Because without the use, not all of this is futile.
Is there, is there any way?
It makes sense to me. Makes sense to me. I mean, if we can't do storage, we can't do this.
So, so as a compromise, or I guess it's not a compromise, that's probably the wrong word to use. I understand your concern, but I don't believe we have the ability to open up the agenda to a new item that is not on, unless it was in the minutes of one of the previous meetings that it was supposed to be on the agenda and it was not. But considering that you have to come back for the final signatures, once every, once all the conditions are met, for the actual approval rather than conditional, is it possible to be able to do that on the same day?
Here's, here's the, here's the issue. Okay, one of the purposes that we need is to have a special permit from the zoning board to allow those. So we go back into the continued public hearing, and now the question is, what's the large square footage that we're asking to do for them to say, yes, they're okay with that use?
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with it. They need the use. Where the, where the, no, no, it shouldn't be. They should be just doing it based on the use. Period. Like, our chart says that we have a business zone that needs a special permit to have an industrial use in it. So it doesn't matter what size the building is, it matters, can we have the use? Period. That's, that's like literally, if you get that passed, then, which, which in my opinion should have been done first, then, that, because then you wouldn't have gone through all these major plans. You would have just said, yeah.
Sorry. We, I agree with you. We went to zoning first because we're like, hey, if we can't get the use, then we're.
Why spend all this money?
Well, that was not what was specifically requested of us by the zoning board at that time. It was in fact specifically said that we really can't make a decision until, at the very least, you have a special permit for the building size, let alone the site plan and all that kind of stuff. We're like, okay, fine. So we, you know, so between, now if we started October 3, 2022, we didn't really come back for anybody in the physical capacity because we had to do three months of work.
Yeah.
Which were, you know, at this point, hopefully, planned too, but.
Hopefully.
So here, I guess where I'm coming from is it seems like, you know, hands are a different kind of jobs.
So I'm trying to find a solution here.
Yeah.
Because I don't think our bylaws allow us to open up an access, right?
Well, state.
So that's where.
But it's not on our agenda.
Amy, how will we set the timeline?
So my thought would be, is in our.
Taking care of everything, and now I guess the selectman made the secretary, you know, yeah.
So my thought would be that we, in our letter to the other two boards.
We stated.
That we, that we state that when they come back, if all the conditions are met, the conditional approval is based on the fact that they're going to meet all that stuff, and then they're, all the conditions, and then they're going to come back for final signatures, and that's when we're going to vote on the special permit, but it should in no way impact their decisions and their departments that way.
Amen.
Because what I don't want to have happen is I don't want you to go to zoning board, which Amy's saying that they won't, but I can see where your concern would be, is you get through all that stuff and they go, okay, so you got a special permit from them, and then you go, see about that, right? And then now the wheel of death, right? So I think in a way that we can be proactive about that is to say that we gave a conditional approval with all these stipulations, they're meeting all those, they still have to come back based off of your two things in your department. When they come back, we'll handle the special permit for the size of the building.
We don't feel comfortable assigning anything until we have these things checked off by you, by zoning and conservation.
We've, we've approved it unanimously, which will be in the letter. We'll say the other, wanted to make sure that you were even approving the use and that conservation's okay with it. When they come back for our final signatures, then we will discuss the special permit and whether that's an approval or not. But at the end of the day, I mean, I can't promise you anything, but I would have, you know what, I won't even go there. You know where I'm going with that.
If you would need to continue that public hearing tonight to a date, sir.
Okay.
Extend it, right?
Because it's open here right now.
Well, it was continued to, and what date that was hasn't been, unless you gave that to Peggy Seltzer, our interim secretary.
I, I didn't give her a date to continue to because we thought we were doing.
So if we, if, are you going to see, you're going to see the other two boards within this month?
April 10.
And our next board meeting is on the 19th? Is that, what's the date? What's today's date?
Six.
The sixth. Yeah, so on the 20th?
Let me see in the minutes.
So you would hopefully have approval from the other two boards by the time you come back on the 20th of this month, to which we can then have that on our agenda to address the final signatures, or the special permit, and then the final signatures. But it wouldn't hold you up for the other two boards?
Appeal period, and after the issuance of, like, for example, conservation's approved, but not issued order of conditions until next week, that they have, and then zoning board, even if they do approve, it does, there's a 20-day appeal period, it's not after the decision is final. So we're talking about, even if those things clear, we're talking about.
So I think, and I may be wrong, so correct me if I'm wrong, for the people that are sticklers for the, the bylaws, or know the bylaws better, not sticklers, sorry. If there's an approval for, from the other two boards at your next meetings, I think that that would suffice enough for us to be able to take the next step in our department.
Even if that means you're not.
Correct. Even if it's inside the appeal and all that other stuff, it would still allow part of our condition of the other two boards approving it for you to come back and have that conversation and we have our.
Continue it to the 20th with the understanding that if that timing isn't working, then we'll just submit a request.
Correct.
Yeah, let's sign 45-day extensions on both of the plant, both special permit and site plan. Well, can we agree that we'll have 45-day extensions?
Absolutely.
Okay?
In hopes that we can get it done on the 20th.
If we can come back earlier, that would be better.
Of course. It's just to give the time.
Sure.
Yeah. But that way, I don't know.
Solution? Okay.
Yes, I think that's a great solution. I really appreciate it. The, just want to make sure that we're not, special, somehow, the hearing can. The, just want to make sure that we're not, the special, somehow the hearing can get lost in the way in such a...
Nope.
We do everything.
No.
Which is administrative.
Correct.
So you guys are agreeing to the site plan and the, and the special permit for the oversized building to be extended for 45 days? Okay?
In hopes that we...
And we'll send those out for you to be executed on Monday morning?
Yeah.
Okay?
And if everything goes through, let's just make sure that the special permit is on the agenda for...
The 20th?
Yeah, okay.
So if they get the approvals for the other boards?
Yeah. Yeah.
So if they get the approvals from the other boards, like, you know, the next meeting, so by the 20th, would they be coming back for the special permit?
Yeah. Special permit and final signature.
There's a steady circumstance where it makes more sense to kick in, but yes, we want to keep the...
But you could, you know, it could be possible on the 20th, if not, you got 45 days.
What were you saying, Pat?
Up to 45, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so we'll continue the hearing for 314 Plymouth Street, self-storage and rental office. Can I get a motion on that for the 20th at?
Seven.
Well, we do have 592 that.
Yeah, we do everything at seven, though, and then we do it in order, remember?
Okay, seven.
Sure.
Can I get him, move that motion?
Oh, still moving.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks. Of course.
Good luck.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, changed my name.
So we'll, we'll make sure that, or maybe, maybe one of us, maybe one of us will go to the zoning board meeting and make sure that they're aware we need that. Okay.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, listen, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you. Sorry about you having to come out. Thanks, Pat.
All right.
Hold on, did we finish the motion on the conditional approval? Because we just, all we did was just continue. We never actually finished the motion on the other.
I don't give it.
No, uh, oh yeah, did we vote? Oh, we did. I got confused, sorry, I didn't mean to like...
Oh, no, it did. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's the whole important part of the...
And I wrote it down, too.
That's, that's the...
What do you want me to do?
That's the important part of the word conditional in the, in front of the approval. Because if they don't meet any of the conditions, then they don't get their approval. So that's, that's why we listed out all those things.
Okay. Magical yes. Darcy, hi. How are you? Good.
20 years ago, we bought Industrial Drive, we're trying to together, so we're looking to kind of put our playgrounds together, which would mean taking up some of the parking lot to conjoin them. And just to make it safe, because cars drive around right now, because they're walking from Industrial Drive to Plymouth Street. So we're trying to make it a one-use unit, which would mean putting up some, I have a plan in here, putting up some concrete planters and trying to keep it separate, which is on one side. I did talk to interim...
Secretary?
And then it's also on the playground. And he said I could ask you guys first before I even come to you. So, you're in.
Seems to be a common theme around here, huh?
Stay with your strength.
Who knew?
It's so small.
It's okay, thanks, Darcy.
So if you look at it, you can see, to the left is 150 Industrial Drive. Might, can I be up here?
Yeah, please.
To the left is 150 Industrial Drive, to the right is 930 Plymouth Street. So we want our playground right now, if you can see behind Plymouth Street on the right, is way far back here.
Okay.
Triangle thing.
Yep.
So we want to pull it forward. So what that would mean for 933 Plymouth Street is we would run a fence across both sides here so that it would enclose it. So when the kids go to the playground from this particular building, they're walking out the door, just to keep them corralled. Right now, they walk into the parking lot and all the way back here. So we push it forward. And then we would like to do, because over here on Industrial Drive, again, they're walking way across all the way back here, is to put some sort of barrier right here so that they can have like a separation, so to speak, and extend the playground to kind of match over here. I guess, so excited.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I think that this would be a site plan, so you'd just do a site plan and come in front of us and we'll go through everything just for...
Yeah, just to make sure that...
Do anything you're really doing that would be a concern is eliminating parking spaces.
Right. I was going to ask that.
Not much parking.
How do we base that on?
So the only...
Number of vehicles per square footage of the building?
Employees, yeah.
Well, the only parking spots that we're taking up right now, well, in doing this would be...
How many would you lose?
It looks like five.
It's only on Industrial Drive, I think.
Yeah. It's only on Industrial Drive. It looks like you're missing like four or five. One, two, three.
One, two, three, four.
Four and a half, so five.
Yeah.
And you have all these other, these are all the parking spaces for your...
Yeah, and then...
And, but it's per square foot, right?
Yeah, and then there's also the Johnny Macaroni's in there, too.
Yeah.
Would you think there'd be any issues with a fire department or anything gunning around the buildings or something?
Well, I know that that was something that was brought up because he was also there when we were, he did my, just did my reinspection. So he was there and he's like, I mean, you have to go back and see what the conditions were when you built the building. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
We did the same thing in Pembroke. I know that it's a different town. Those, we literally had to make the fence wide enough so that a fire truck would get in and get to three sides of the building. Fire truck pull, roll away. So it's very similar to that, it just would be a matter of what, what health acts would allow for. That's why we were thinking the concrete planters, but...
So they'd be movable?
Yeah. They would be movable, but I mean, our thought process is to kind of fence this area in, you know what I mean, for the kids.
Yeah.
But that's really up to what they think. I prefer to go big so that if there was any issues, I could go...
Straight down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, exactly.
How many children are we talking?
How many kids we walk over?
Yes. How many would be participating in the use of the playground?
Between both schools at one, well, at one time. We're licensed for 39 at Industrial Drive and we're licensed for 56 at Plymouth Street. But they're never all out there at the same time. If that's what you're asking.
I hope not, that would be a lot of work.
I don't think corral is the right word at that point.
That's what you do with two, right?
Barely, barely. I mean, I think if, if it's got to do, if we've got to do a site plan anyways, we can have the conversation with the fire chief at the same time. And then that way, whatever those conditions are that need to be met, they're met and then we go from there.
And Grady knows all of our, yeah, so like, it'll be fine.
What about traffic flow, like picking up the kids from one side?
Yeah.
So, no, so basically, because right now, like, to be quite honest with that Plymouth Street one, we, I have in the, he's, I have like plastic jersey barriers because people whip, whip, like, Amazon comes around that.
Oh, my God.
And I'm like, but we're in the front, why are you delivering a package and that? So that, we could be walking out to that playground, so I'm like, oof.
They're scary, too.
Oh, my God.
The way they drive.
The trash trucks on the whole side of my roof. But, yeah, that's where, as far as traffic flow, they come in, they drop off and they leave. Nobody stays, you know, other than the police.
But by doing this, that eliminates that. By doing this project, that's going to eliminate any cars whipping back there.
Oh, yes.
That's the whole point, is to eliminate the car, the flow of traffic. And putting the kids in danger. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
So we could pass this as a public safety issue?
I mean, yes. I, I, that's what, more for me for safety is, you know, if I could migrate them together, it would...
I'm just concerned with any other cars having access to, you know, where the kids might be walking or playing.
Well, that's why...
Jumping over the fence.
Yeah, that's my, my plan is to hopefully not have that. Yeah. And if you look in the front here, I'd expect to put some more like concrete planters so that people wouldn't, you know, bump into, I mean, drive into the fence or whatever.
Right. Well, I definitely think that you should have a few more conversations with the fire chief in advance of making this plan. Like, maybe like even like some movable gates or something like that, that could be open on, off, out. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Like the concrete planters are in, I'll make that sign, I can put two big huge gates or something that would...
You see?
Do we want an opinion from the police chief?
Well, I want an opinion from all boards, but, and yes, for beforehand, before she makes her plan, great idea to talk to them.
Yes.
For sure. And then that way, you'd know that they're not going to have concerns with the plan that you bring to us.
Okay.
Yeah. Everybody agree?
Do you have an official plan, site plan with this that's...
Yeah.
Yes.
Other than the one that's in front of us? So something to bring to the chief that you...
Oh, yeah, right.
Great.
There was a couple of roadblocks and that's when originally we were thinking about putting like a sidewalk to go across and then like, oh, at least a fire truck could go over the sidewalk, but then that turned into a drainage issue, so.
That's a lot, yeah. Okay.
Least resistance.
Okay, cool.
All right, so my next steps are to...
Talk to them, have your plan done and have a site plan application put in.
Site plan application, okay.
Grady will know how to do that. So if you tell him that you need to do a site plan and that you should talk to, you know, the boards around town, maybe not limited to the fire, you know, fire.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah.
As long as you're not doing anything to change conservation, right, guys? I mean, you probably shouldn't have to touch them.
Trees.
Well, they will, yeah.
Trees are tasty, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Frank, please, we're going to have to go to zoning.
She's eliminating parking space, she need a bearing?
That's us.
That's us.
No, that's us. We're parking.
Yep.
So I mean, she might have more than enough spaces, but we'll have to determine that. So great, he has our bylaws for the parking spots as well, so he'll, he'll make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
If there's a way to maybe mark or number the parking spaces, because we've been known to be sitting in here and counting up to 87 and losing count.
It's so funny.
And then, so...
Yeah, I know, everybody's own in-laws are different. Yes. Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. You, too.
Happy Easter.
We need to sign all the bills, right?
Yep. Who wants to do the bills, Brendan?
Sure. Brendan's going to pay all the bills?
Yeah, I don't know. Just need the company, well, I'll leave my tax bill, joke alone. Okay. You need me to make a motion? Okay. Motion to pay the bill for Express Newspaper ad... I'm sorry?
Invoice number.
Oh, yep. That. Yeah. Invoice number 14206 and the amount of $90.
Can I have a second?
How's invoice number was? That was the invoice number.
Oh, legal ad number 14206.
314 Plymouth.
It's not on, I don't see it on mine.
It's not on the bill, that's why.
Oh, it's on the...
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Bill. Okay, so motion to pay the invoice number A11891CL to the Express Newspaper for $90.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 40.
Sorry. Motion to pay the bill to PGB Engineering LLC, invoice, three invoices, 130B for $1,599, invoice 130C, Plan Review Services for $117, and invoice number 130D, Plan Review Services for $1,619.96, for a grand total of $3,335.96.
Can I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I feel like the public should know that there's accounts for those last three bills, you know what I mean? Just to like let them know, like...
Yeah, it's not like someone...
We're not, we're not paying for those last three bills. There's accounts, revolving accounts set up by the applicants to pay those bills just so that, you know. And then next we have minutes. Are you guys prepared for those?
What is potential meeting minutes? What is that?
Yeah, wait.
Just like...
Oh, they, she sent them out to us today, but she didn't get them. Like, she probably figured that we'd want to read them before we voted on them.
Got it. There was one meeting that I was not able to attend.
Okay.
So I want to make sure.
Which one it was?
It's, yeah, I just...
You're here.
I just don't want to vote inappropriately.
And that's the 19th of January.
And I was there, this chair, oh, member's absent, this one. Okay. So January 19th, I am not able to vote.
Okay.
So, oh, we should do that one first.
Or...
What do we need the bill signed?
Minutes to 19th, we've been, five minutes, we've been, no?
Well, we, we really, it's January 19th.
January 19th.
We need to get it in.
One of how many?
Well, we get the 19th and February 2nd.
Yeah, like, we need to get those in for open meeting law violation.
Are they included with the, was the 19th, the executive session one also?
No. That's just the ones that Peggy did. And Caroline, we're just doing catch-up. And Caroline, we're just doing catch-up.
What was the 21-page one?
19th of January. I don't remember now, what is it, Rex?
January 19th, minutes are 20 pages long. They want to carry over your 4-6 meeting to read them? Peggy, was that it? Was that from today?
Well, those have been in our email for...
They have.
A while now.
Well, the, what's the potential meeting minutes?
She had emailed them out this afternoon, but she didn't get them in here for us because she figured we'd want to read them.
So it's really just the 19th of December?
The only one that's actually going to open, well, is the 19th.
The 19th, I've gone...
Yeah, but we only can do two meetings or 30 days, whichever, or three meetings or 30 days, whichever's...
Right.
By state law.
I signed that already.
Did we motion it?
Not yet. I thought we did. I saw a bunch of people signing shit, so, signing stuff, so...
Get it going.
Amy, have you gone through with any corrections, deletions, additions?
I haven't anything that I want to add or to subtract.
21 pages.
Well, this is...
It's in cycle.
I was going to say, we've all been getting along so well, I can't possibly see...
I think it's a verbatim. I think it's, it's a verbatim. It's basically a verbatim.
Why do we even, why even do verbatim? Why do they do that?
Because it's, there was hearings involved and that was a motion that was made, remember? Well, anyway.
Also, that was the 19th one.
It was verbatim.
Oh.
So it's really just whatever we said. It's not anything that anybody interpreted. You want to make a motion for the February 2nd?
Yeah, so February 2nd is only three, four pages long, right? And it doesn't seem as though there was anything that, or not even, it's two pages.
What are you thinking on this? You want to read the whole?
I'd, I'd like to, yes, I would.
Yeah?
And I think, yeah.
Well, the only thing that would be wrong is that she made a mistake, you know, watching the meetings. That's the only thing that would be wrong on it, but that's, that's a...
But we're kind of, we kind of need to because it's over the required times.
Probably more than once. Yeah, I briefed through it before, but I mean, I've never sat there and...
I mean, we're talking two weeks, right?
Two weeks?
Yeah, but it's been two months plus, two and a half months.
So that's a problem if it goes another two weeks?
Well, it's already on violation.
Yeah, because that, well, the next meeting would be April 20th, so that's actually, now you're going in at three months.
It's, it's like 30 days or two meetings, whichever comes first.
That's, that's a, it's a state law?
Open meeting law.
Open meeting law?
Yeah, I mean, I might be like a little bit wrong. It might be three meetings or, but it's 30 days, whichever is first. You know what I mean? Like, it's very close to that.
So you've read this whole thing and you don't see a problem with it?
I didn't see a problem with it.
Unfortunately, I haven't just, I haven't read it word for word.
I know.
Is there anything in there that was just, like, any topic that was in there that may have been a...
I don't even remember what day it was.
Well, it was a Thursday.
Well, you know what I mean. What was on the meeting, I mean, excuse me. It's up to you guys. I mean, I just, I'm just trying to not obtain open meeting law violations that end up costing the town money.
I'd like to read them to go to them, that's just the...
All right. And what about February 2nd? Do you want to make a motion on those?
I make a motion. Did you guys get a chance to read these?
I read that one, that one's easy.
February 2nd? All right, so I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for February 2nd?
Second? Do I have a second I should play? Rick? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anybody want to go over anything in mail correspondence?
You want me to do the mail real quick, but you just want us to do it?
Only if you wanted to mention anything. If you've already read it, then by any, by all means, then certainly bring up something. Here's the minutes for the 2nd of February, Rick.
There's nothing. Just notification.
Yeah, it's from other towns.
What's happening in that town?
How about our motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the planning board meeting.
Can I get a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.